Senior housing, it's all in your backup. I know some of this is a little confusing, I'll try to pare it down. We changed the, some of it was verbiage change to be more aligned with the current market. So we changed life care community to continuing care community.
Continuing care retirement.
Continuing care retirement community, okay.
CCRC.
CCRC, I try to do this in memory. We changed the 30% open space retirement to 10% to be in align with our other items such as apartment buildings. We kept the five minimum acres and for the continuing care retirement community. And we removed the need for a special use permit for the continuing care retirement community from R-10.
And RX.
And RX. Okay, I think those are the, summarizes the changes.
I think also that the 10% did not include the setback.
Right, the 10% did not include the setbacks.
More for approval?
So, discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so, first of all, I want to thank the mayor for giving this very close look because I think we're all very concerned that we want to provide better opportunities for taking care of our seniors in Raleigh. It is a complex, complicated subject between the zoning issues and the licensing issues and the various kinds of use categories that are out there. Will say that I had, today I did talk with a fellow named Bill Lamb, executive director of a nonprofit called Friends of Residents in Long Term Care. And he said that having affordable housing alternatives is important, but we also need to be careful about identifying providers. He said there are some areas that are operating under the radar now. And he suggested that he would be willing to give us his view about whether we're opening up some opportunities for unlicensed facilities that might end up operating as sort of warehousing seniors with little or no care. And then also, he suggested contacting Catherine Goldman at Wake County Human Services. They are involved in the licensing of senior care facilities. And Mr. Lamb said that they are tuned into unlicensed groups that are increasingly operating under the radar screen. So I'd like to suggest it might be prudent to hold this just for two weeks, get some comments back from those two individuals, Bill Lamb and Catherine Goldman, and just get confirmation that we're not creating some unanticipated circumstances where we're providing opportunities for less scrupulous people to be warehousing seniors with little or no oversight.
So do they have a specific item that we had changed, much of what relates to what we call congregate care, we didn't change at all? Was there something specific so we know what to ask that they're concerned about?
Well, I guess what I would say is just ask them to look at two things. One, our change, changes to our regulations and other areas that, again, might not be related to this change in regulation, but might be operating under the radar screen to, that are providing services in a way that we might want to, like congregate care facilities, that allow double density with very minimal oversight, that he seemed to think were going to be a growing problem, that we get some information on whether that is something else we need to look at. But, again, not to stop this from moving forward, but just to make sure that we've considered concerns that have been addressed by this one senior nonprofit advocacy group and potentially might be some additional information coming from Wake County Human Services on the, on the topic.
I do know we discussed in the committee about monitoring and supervision and accreditation. And from my understanding, there's very little authority this city has in that area. So, but that conversation did come up in committee, just so you're aware.
Right, well, I'm just, in reading comments about how, what the UDO does say about congregate care in particular, which is that you're allowed double density because you can put two per bedroom, there's minimal oversight, only one person for four hours one day a week. I'm not sure how that really qualifies as congregate care for potentially a group of eight people living in one house. And just, again, not specifically questioning the changes in front of us now, but just to say, there are senior housing alternatives that appear to be out there now that, that may not be the kind of thing that we would want to continue to permit and approve. And actually, that's kind of a question, and that is, maybe you talked about this.
We kind of do, I mean, those are going to exist whether we have the zoning or not. I mean, you know, we, people are going to defy the rules and if they can make money and, there's always going to be those people. I think the, what we discussed was sort of the, you know, we are zoning, we are not oversight. That is a function of the state, or in some instances, the county. But we do not perform that kind of oversight. We did discuss the possibility of when we, if there was a rezoning or a permital under the zoning for congregate care, would it be possible for staff to put in their procedures that they would then notify the state or whoever the overriding authority is to let them know we had done that? So then they would be alerted to the need to provide oversight because we currently don't have that.
So who approves congregate care facilities? I mean, it's in the UDO, so it seems like the city must approve them.
Well, we approved the zoning. I don't know if Travis is going to probably speak to this a little easier because it's a difficult mixture of.
And then, corollary question is, who can revoke that approval?
Correct, so, there are a couple of different layers of regulation occurring here. The first is land use from the city standpoint. And if there is a use that's permitted by the zoning code, then staff and development services would review a permit for this type of facility. If the operation is not operating in accordance with zoning standards, then city staff can go out and ask for compliance with zoning standards. Now, if there are other unrelated issues that are not being addressed by the UDO and are instead regulated by the state or by the county, it would be up to those entities to regulate those facets. So what was discussed in the committee was that whenever there was an approval of this type of facility, that staff could reach out to the county and to the state and alert them to the approval of this type of facility, so that there would be a stronger coordination there.
We're talking about congregate care facilities?
That's correct.
So we do, the city does approve them?
The city would provide approval for that land use on a property, that's correct.
And the standards we set forth are just this one person for hours a day, one day a week?
Correct.
That's it?
There are a few other minor standards, but that's, that's correct.
Well, so.
That's a zoning standard in the.
Mr. Stevenson, I, I think, I don't have any problem granting two more weeks to answer those questions if it's for the protection of our seniors. I'll second your motion.
Well, okay, so, all right. So I guess that would be a substitute motion, because we already had a motion and a second, so.
Oh, you had a second already? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I just have one question to your point, Travis. Do we have a mechanism in place where we could give warning or notice to a state agency as it relates to the zoning of a congregate care?
I'm not certain there's anything in place today, but that's something that certainly could be developed.
We would have to develop that with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what we also want to, sort of the other side of that is, you know, we've talked about wanting seniors that maybe don't need skilled care, nursing care, to be able to live. And if they choose to live together in a house or whatever, in a neighborhood, four hours a week could be somebody that comes and checks and cleans. I mean, there, it's the whole gamut. I think we, think of congregate care, we think of nursing home or something like that, and this is, this is something different. So, you know, then you've got the, you know, when do you trigger bringing in the state? Because if there aren't skilled services being provided, then, so there's sort of that delineation, which is not, I mean, determination of care is not really our job.
That's correct.
Is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine, we'll hold this item, oh, we need a second on the substitute. Second?
Second, I do, I have one other question. It seems that we need a special use permit for most of the zoning, but not for R-10. And I'd like to understand why not in R-10.
But we don't need a special use permit for congregate care.
Just the CCRCs.
For, for a nursing home. The only time, when the UDO was written, they put in a special use permit for, when you combine them to the continuing care retirement community. But separately, either one of those do not require a special use permit. So, the committee had a discussion and decided that, you know, because of potential conflicts, they still had to get licenser by the state, often they have to get a certificate of need, all of those things take at least a couple of years. Because we kept the land requirement at five acres, that was certainly not anything that could sort of, sort of be snuck into a neighborhood by buying up a few lots and, and, you know, putting them together. So we felt like that was really a protection to allow everyone. And it was a carryover from the previous when there was not a special use permit required for it.
But is there a special use permit required in R-6 or R-4?
Yes.
Under R-6 and under, right.
Then I don't understand why it wouldn't be in R-10. Because I've heard from a lot of people who live in R-10 districts that they have concerns about this, especially the proliferation of other kinds of institutional care. And they want to be able, as a neighborhood, to, you know, make sure that their neighborhood isn't being inundated with all different kinds of institutions. So I'm wondering why R-10, you know, is the redheaded stepchild here?
Well, I think it's to be consistent, because R, previously, they had R-6 and R-10 needing a special use permit, but it's not needed in congregate care or rest home, or for a rest home. So to be consistent, it's just when you combine them that it was required. So we said just to be consistent, we removed it.
Well, another, to me, another way of looking at consistency is if you require it in R-1, 2, 4, and 6, why not in 10? That's consistency too.
Green or, green or red apples?
Depends on if you live in that R-10.
Exactly, yes.
Well, you still have to find, like we said, we discussed, because we kept the five acre minimum.
Right.
We felt like that was a pretty good, it's kind of hard to amass five acres in a neighborhood that zoned R-10 without, I would say, it'd be hard to slip something in on a five acre piece of property.
But we're holding it.
All right, we're holding it for two.
We got a vote on that?
Weeks. I have a motion and a second for, to hold it for two weeks, that's why I was checking, right?
So can I just be really clear about what I'm asking for? One, is the new definition, the new category we're creating, is that in some way creating some new class of developments that will, might not be regulated?
No.
For clarification, we're not creating a new category, we're renaming it. We didn't create anything new, all we did was rename it.
Okay, and then the second one goes to the congregate care issue. And, and the question there is, does our UDO really do an adequate job? Because we can get four seniors living together, unrelated seniors in a house now.
Right.
But now we're talking about putting eight in a house. And the question there is, if we're going to double up the number of seniors living in this house, do we have the kind of regulations in place, one person, four hours a day, one day a week, that really makes that additional double density of senior living there a viable option?
And Travis, just, how often do we get requests for that type of congregate care? Where it's just like a house and they want to deem it congregate care so they can have double density, is that?
You know, I'm not really sure because I don't.
You could have four now.
I don't hear questions or requests about that directly, because that, that type of activity would come in through development services. But it's something that we could look into, how many permits have been issued over the course of time.
I was wondering.
And of course, that's the answer I'd hoped to get from Bill Lamb and Catherine Goldman.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second to hold this for two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay, we will not be meeting. We have the text change TC 1117 for senior housing.
Thank you, good afternoon again. So this is a text change to our Unified Development Ordinance that deals with one very specific sect of what we call senior housing today. The zoning code refers to it as a life care community, that name would be changed through this, this request. And you may recall, this came forward as a result of a petition of citizens, was discussed in the council committee, and there were some minor alterations to the text. However, at the last meeting, staff was directed to reach out to two different individuals, one of which who is employed by Wake County and oversees the enforcement, for lack of a better term, on rest homes. And so, reached out to her, name's Catherine Goldman, and had a very pleasant phone conversation with her and discussed what this text change would do, what the modification would do. And she indicated she didn't have any issues with it and that she, she welcomed the additional touch point that, that might occur in sharing permit data with them. That was one of her, her biggest concerns, was just in not knowing about these unlicensed units that pop up. I also spoke with Bill Lamb, who is with the Friends of Residents in Long Term Care. Again, his primary concern is about unlicensed rest homes that come online. And he admitted that, that catching those type of facilities, or regulating those type of facilities really is not on the city's onus, and that he is supportive of the text change moving forward.
Okay.
The information, I move for approval.
I have a question. There's a section.
I'll second for discussion.
Yeah, there's a, a section in this that says special use permits will not be required in R-10 zoning districts. And, but, but it is required in other residential zoning districts. And I had discussed with several folks that I really thought it was important to keep, to have a special use permit in R-10 also. And I've been told, well, you really don't need to worry about it because they'll never be able to, to amass a five acre site in an R-10 district, or it will be very difficult, it's unlikely to happen, so don't worry about it. So my counter to that is, if it's unlikely to happen, then why don't we go ahead and leave the special use permit in there? So I'd like to ask for an amendment to leave the special use permit in R-10.
Well, I think that the issue that we discussed a lot in committee is that the licenser of these facilities often takes a couple of years. And we did have a discussion about, could we ask the Board of Adjustment to make an exception for CCRCs to have the special use permit be good for two years? But I don't remember exactly. I think that it was hard to, we're all looking at you.
I think that would be a very difficult thing for the council to, to do lawfully, if at all.
So mayor, so mayor, if, if a special use permit extension isn't available legally, we don't have a course of action on that, then I just want to add another wrinkle to what appears to be complex. But I agree with the fact that it would probably be difficult to, in the city of Raleigh, find five acres contiguous in an R-10 area. But Travis, to the point of, I wonder if you had mixed use next to an R-10 neighborhood? And I think that is possible. It would be nice to know where those possibilities might sit in the city. And if that indeed becomes a case where you could amass five acres next to mixed use and residential, in the, in the readiness to want to have more senior housing availability, but also looking at protecting neighborhoods who might butt up to a mixed use neighborhood, mixed use development, would that be a rezoning? Or could we have staff come back to us about where that might occur and what kind of steps we would go forward with on, on that kind of situation?
Well, there are a couple of different approaches that the city council can take. So remember, there are really three different ways that the city, as an entity, can approve or review certain land use requests. Number one is in the legislative arena through a rezoning. So if there's concern about a particular use in a particular zoning district, the, the use could be potentially removed from that zoning district, which would cause someone to come forward and ask for a rezoning. The second approach would be to require a special use permit, which is a quasi judicial public hearing in front of the, the Board of Adjustment. And the third is through administrative approvals, meaning it's a permitted use, but there might be certain standards that must be met to satisfy the ordinance. So, I mean, those really are the three doors that the land use approvals can go through. If there's concern about the R-10 zoning district or any other zoning district, then the city council would have to choose, you know, one of those first two doors, either rezoning or special use permit.
Okay, so, with that said, if we could just hold this at the table so that we could have a little more discussion about what we might allow in a situation where an R-10 neighborhood is attached to or butts up to a mixed use, so we might decide what the next steps are for whether it should be a rezoning or a special use permit or staff?
So I guess the question, if, if a property was split, part of the property was zoned, you know, RX and some of the property was for R-10 lots, and they both had the CCRC allowed in them.
Right, those are the type of zoning questions that keep me up at night. So, you know, what we've taken is a fairly literal, literal approach in that the use that is contained within the zoning district must abide by the zoning district regulations. So if you've got a split zoning, you've got to satisfy both districts.
Okay, so they have to abide by all the setbacks and rules for R-10 and the R-10 piece?
Right.
And the mixed use and the other ones?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So since we already have a motion and a second on the table, that would have to be a substitute motion?
I have another question.
Okay.
Okay, could we hold the issue for R-10 but move forward with the remainder of the text change?
Well, I mean, I guess we could as a text change. I think it's probably fine to just wait two weeks.
It's possible to bifurcate, but I'm not certain of the advantage there.
Okay, then we'll wait.
Well, we already have.
Unless that, unless the, are you comfortable with the fact that if it's, some of it is in R-10, it has to abide by the R-10 rules?
Well, if the R-10 rule requires the special use permit, because what I don't, what I'm not understanding is, if a special use permit is required in R-1, R-2, or R-4.
R-6.
R-6, but not in R-10, the whole thing about the one year timeframe, I don't understand if that's a problem in R-10, why isn't it a problem in the other ones as well? So I, I just want R-10 to be treated the same as the other residential zoning districts. I don't, I don't understand why that should be an issue.
All right, well, go ahead.
I was just saying, it's not the same, because in R-10, you can do multifamily, and you can't do that in, in the other residential. So by that simple fact, it's different. So, but I'm okay with holding it for two weeks.
Yeah, mayor, I, I don't have a problem with holding it for two weeks, but I would like to point out that Mrs. Crowder said that she would like to add a wrinkle to senior housing.
Oh, sorry about that, no pun intended.
Our seniors have enough wrinkles already.
I'm there.
So, again, we still have a, is the original motion withdrawn then?
I'm willing to withdraw the motion.
Okay, we'll bring this back in two weeks. And I would make, like to make sure that the people that have been coming to the committee meetings that were engaged in the conversations are re-engaged in these conversations.
So can I just, a quick comment on Councilor Crowder's request? I agree with everything she said, that the chances of an all R-10, five acre assemblage for a CCRC is highly unlikely. But the other scenario she proposes, where it's a budding mixed use district and some R-10 that would be added in to get to the five acres, I think it would be good for us to know how that might or might not play out. While I think we all want to make sure that we're expanding senior housing options, we also want to make sure that we're also protecting our neighborhood. So it would be good to know whether this is a real concern or not, and just to see some, staff could provide us some examples of whether that is a likelihood or not.
And thanks for following up with the two references that we asked you to check with. I appreciate that.
So we're withdrawing the?
Motion.
Motion's withdrawn, we'll bring this back in two weeks. Next, we have text change TC 1117, senior housing.
Thank you, good afternoon. You might recall, this was discussed at your last meeting. And as a reminder, this is a text change that would alter an existing use category within the UDO. And it takes two existing uses. Number one, renames the classification of use to continuing care retirement community. So it's combining a rest home and congregate care into one use.
We already had the use.
That's correct.
We're renaming it.
It's renamed, and then there's an alteration to some of the standards, yes, ma'am? So as we've continued to have this conversation, there was a question about the zoning districts where this would be permitted as an allowed use. A CCRC as currently proposed would be a special use in the R-1, R-2, R-4, and R-6 zoning districts. It would be what we call limited use, which means there are limitations to it, in R-10 and RX zoning districts.
Can you just speak to what the limitations are? Do you remember?
Certainly, so there's a requirement that you have a minimum lot size in R-10, it's a minimum of five acres. There's a minimum amount of landscaping that would be required on site. The landscaping cannot include the protective yard, that is a requirement.
Do you know what the protective yard requirement is?
It, it ties back to an existing standard in the code. I'm going off memory, but it's a certain width, I want to say a 10 foot or a five foot width of landscaping with trees in it. But I can get you specific information if you'd like. And then obviously, there are general code standards that do apply, things like parking requirements and lighting and general landscaping, that type of thing. So when we spoke at the last meeting, there was a question about the R-10 district specifically, and where we might find R-10 parcels that are five acres in size in close location to, to mixed use zoning districts. So staff did some homework here, and I know this is going to be tough to, to parse out, but what we're showing is every instance where there's R-10 zoning that is five acres and more located close to mixed use zoning. So don't squint too hard, I've got some examples I'm going to show you that are blown up. This is just a citywide perspective that shows, that confirms that, yes, you find this all around the city. I think that's the takeaway from this map. So if we start looking at more specific locations, you know, here's, we're south of Pool Road here, and we've got a nice vacant tract, it's, it's five acres in size, that's located directly adjacent to mixed use zoning. We're located on Parnell Road here. So this would be a location that's available for, for continuing care retirement community. And I'll just kind of breeze through these, if you have questions about the specifics of the site, let me know. Here's a developed property on Kent Road, south of Western Boulevard, and we're now on the east side of Kent Road. So obviously, there's development on the parcel, doesn't mean it couldn't be redeveloped into, into something more. But obviously, having structures on the property somewhat complicate redevelopment. Here's a parcel on Garner Road, that's directly south of, of the interstate, and it's directly adjacent to CX 3 zoning. Here's an odd shaped parcel on Cherry, which is on the south side of Carolina Pines Avenue. Here's a long parcel on Pool Road, zoned R-10, conditional use, fully wooded, so redevelopment here is possible. Here's another parcel on Garner Road, we're on the west side of Garner Road. Again, undeveloped property today. Another undeveloped property on Old Birch Road, south of Rock Quarry. Here's a parcel on Lee Road, I believe there is a structure here, but it is, we'll call it underdeveloped, it's not fully developed. Developed parcel on Baymar, we are south of Glenwood Avenue. Acorn Circle, and this was a rezoning case from a few years back, where we've got a fair amount of R-10 with mixed use at the front. And then, you recently saw this rezoning on Lynchford Road. It's R-10 conditional use, that's adjacent to OX, and there's some additional parcel or property on the other side, on the west side of Lynchford Road. So this is just an example of where we find this throughout the city. Again, it happens in just about every quadrant. And some sites might be trickier than others to redevelop, but happy to answer any questions about this or about the text change itself.
Got a question. How tall by right could the buildings be in the CCRC in one of these R-10 districts?
So R-10 generally places a cap of 40 feet maximum height, but I believe that if this were developed as either an apartment building or a civic building, it could go a little bit taller than that. I think the cap there is 45 feet. But in either instance, it's three stories.
So the cap's pretty much the same in R-10?
Yes, ma'am. At three stories.
Could be townhouses or whatever, okay.
And is there a minimum building footprint, you think of these as being? And is there a minimum building footprint, you think of these as being larger footprint buildings?
There is no maximum building footprint regulation for this type of use, or any other use. There are impervious limitations on properties, but there is no maximum building footprint.
Well, I really appreciate the conversation that we've had about this, and I think I've heard from one of the proponents, that you've actually gave an interpretation, that even if you went for a partial R-10, you'd still have to have the full five acres there. So there's no scenario where you'd have mostly a mixed use, and then a little bit of R-10. If you wanted any R-10, you'd have to get five acres of R-10.
Right.
So that sort of means that any project that you do in R-10, it'll be a large five acre parcel, minimum of R-10. And what it also means is, rather than a mixed use parcel, and I was looking at the abutting single family, this is a perfect example here, this whole side of this project is all single family, and most of the projects that you, most of the parcels you showed had substantial single family right next to them. Guess the concern here is where a, an institutional project would normally be built in a mixed use district, and art, and they would get the residential transition of 50 feet or so. In this R-10 setting, it would be by right with what would be the setback, from the, minimum setback from the, from the single family residential line.
So it depends on building type, and generally, building types are required to have a 20 or 30 foot setback, I believe, in residential. But again, I can confirm that if you'd like.
Would the setback be whatever it is for R-10?
It's the, based on the building type, yes ma'am. And that's where I'm maybe not speaking with precision, because the setbacks are different for each building type, and there's a new district.
If it was massed like an apartment building, the setback would be the same as an apartment building in R-10?
That's correct.
What I assume, most of these would be in that sort of format?
I think that's, that's pretty fair, yes ma'am.
What that leads me to wonder is that, in a typical institutional development like this, in a mixed use district, we'd have a 50 foot setback, and then we'd have height transitioning, of course, it starts at 40 feet, so. Versus in this one, it would be by right, and there would be a much smaller setback to the single family neighborhood, even though the building would, could potentially be quite massive, if not tall. So I'm just concerned that we're, it would be better to have a public process, if we're going to look at, especially if we're going to look at a five acre development, that's a very large development, abutting, single family residential, rather than saying, let's do something by right here that won't have any public engagement.
So what if it was an apartment?
It could be a five acre apartment building.
Right, it's the same thing.
That's a big building. And do we want to allow that by right?
In R-10?
It's already there.
Five acre building?
In R-10?
If they have, yeah.
Well, I think, I think the likelihood of someone building a five acre building is probably silly, because there's going to be other things there. I think the greater thought here is, is that an adequate setback that we have currently, as it relates to R-10, in something that we haven't allowed before, at this size? And I think that, is that a 50 foot setback?
But again, I'd have to check, it's dependent upon the building type. I don't believe it's as large as 50.
Okay.
But I can look that up.
I was trying to get in my head what that looked like. So that, so that we might move forward with the project, just trying to figure out where the wins are here, so that everybody feels like they have a little bit of what they wanted in the, in the ordinance. So am I hearing that the problem is, you're concerned about what the setbacks might be against an R-10 in a five acre space that could be built out? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, that plus the idea of a massive apartment building being built right next to smaller residential homes.
Yeah, and again, the idea that in the other residential districts, a special use permit is required. And I know the city attorney looked into whether there were some concerns about, you know, the time length, because a special use permit expires after a year, and whether it's, whether we could expand that, and in, across all the residential districts. And I don't know if we've got an answer on that at this point.
We have looked at whether that could be expanded, and it would have to be uniform to have an expansion.
So we could give, we could say a special use permit lasts for two years, if we made it for all the residential districts, not just for, not treat, not treat R-10 differently?
That's correct, and for all continuing care retirement communities, regardless of the district in which they locate it.
Right.
That would be lawful.
Then, you know, for me, this is-
Go ahead.
For me, this has always been about, you know, residents in a neighborhood being able to have some involvement in what's going on in the neighborhood. And I think there, you know, to me, there's a couple of different ways we can do it. And this is not about trying to keep seniors from having housing in neighborhoods, the idea is just to make compatible neighborhoods. And so I, I think we could either explore expanding the special use permit timeframe for all, for all of these uniformly, or we could say, senior housing can't happen in R-10, and if you want to do senior housing in R-10, you need to come do a, request a rezoning, and then that involves neighborhood participation and bringing it back to council. So that, either one of those would be my-
Well, I don't, I don't think, what I'm hearing Travis say, is that anything that would be built is outside the parameters of what's already allowed in R-10.
That's correct.
The size would not be outside the parameters of what's already allowed in R-10.
That's correct. And to answer the question that was asked previously, the setback, the rear setback would be 20 feet?
20 feet.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
And just another question. Travis, what would, what would be the requirements to get a special use permit in this kind of scenario? And what would be the findings you'd have to make?
Right. So to obtain a special use permit, you've got to obviously submit an application, and appear before the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment reviews a structured set of what we call showings, or findings. There are six or eight of them that generally apply to all special use permit requests. And so the applicant would be required to stand up and affirmatively prove that these findings or showings have been met. And if the applicant can do that, then the special use permit must be granted. Because this is a quasi judicial hearing, there is an allowance for testimony, for public testimony. However, there are certain things that a general layperson cannot speak to, such as traffic or engineering. You have to be a licensed professional to do that in a quasi judicial hearing.
But do the showings relate to contextual compatibility?
They speak to compatibility character, that type of thing. Yes, sir.
And so would an abutting neighbor be able to- Provide testimony on their sense of the impact of a large building?
Provided, it's not contrary to what the state law permits for testimony, yes?
So, we had this discussion, obviously, a few times in committee, because the, especially because of the, whether it's a certificate in need, or the state permitting, or federal permitting, or whatever this processes takes, a couple of years at least, was sort of the issue that, that came up. So you're saying if the special use permit was good for two years, it would have to be across all, like all the residential, where it's already required?
Yes ma'am. You could not separate and have a different standard for, say, R-1 through R-6, and have a different time period for R-10?
What about the mixed use?
So, anything subject to this special use permit would have to have the same expiration period.
But I don't think we are talking about having a special use permit in mixed use, just in the residential districts.
So what would it take to get the special use permit changed to two years for one use?
That's going to require a text change, because the one year period is currently embedded in the special use portion of the UDO.
What it, question, would it be, since that's another text change, before you can do this text change, would it be amenable to the council to, to acknowledge that senior housing is important to us, and we want to try to find places to put it, and to the new way we're going to configure it? That not, pulling R-10 out, and saying that you come back for rezoning, doesn't deny the ability, it just brings it back to the table. Is that something that people could feel comfortable with?
I could go even further than that, and say, if we pull it from R-10, that we continue to have discussions about how we can make it happen in R-10. And not, not just necessarily limiting it to a rezoning.
We've certainly been having the discussion for months, and it's allowed in R-10 currently. Currently.
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
I mean, we're trying to make this, it sounds to me, I mean, we want it, we're trying to make it easier to have seniors living in communities. That's the goal.
Yes.
Sounds to me like your, your issue is with the size of the building, which has already been set by the rules of R-10, and the closeness to the neighbors, which has already been set by the rules of R-10.
Yes ma'am.
So you want to have a different standard of how close it can be for retirement homes? Is that what I'm hearing?
So I'm going to-
I mean, this is, this is the, I understand, but this is the most low impact. There's no driving, it's pretty quiet after 6 o'clock. You know, if you want something adjacent to a neighborhood, this is about as low impact as it can get.
Well, this has been brought up to me by folks who live in R-10 neighborhoods, and I think some of their concerns are noises from ambulances and fire trucks that often are called to these facilities. Also, depending on how institutional it becomes, you know, deliveries and trucks and things like that. So I think, you know, again, the purpose is not to deny seniors the right to live in a neighborhood, it's more about treating all the residential neighborhoods the same. So I'd like to see if, what Councilman Crowder, Councilperson Crowder suggested, and Councilperson Cox amended, I think, I could certainly support those.
Which is just not allowing it in R-10?
Not allowing it in R-10 unless they bring it back for a rezoning, and continue the discussion to see what other options are available.
Well, you know, that's also very contrary to the discussion that we just had about affordability. Because when you add the layers of having to apply for rezonings and all of that, then you add a, another layer of expense to what we're trying to do, which is to make way for seniors to live in residential areas. I mean, I, you know, I would love to get this done, because we've been talking about it forever, but it seems like there's still-
Well, and-
So is the issue, from what I'm hearing, is the emergency services to a life care center?
That's one of, one of the issues. The main issue is that if you live in R-1, 2, 4, or 6, you have the ability to weigh in on what's happening in your neighborhood. And if you live in R-10 for this, you don't. And that, you know, and I understand that R-10 is, you know, increased density, and it's not just about affordability. I mean, a lot of these senior housing facilities tend, can be very expensive. So, you know, it's not that I'm trying to limit affordable housing, or anything like that.
I'm just saying, if you make it so you can't build it, and you have to rezonate, that is a, a layer of expense. I think we're all assuming that they're going to be a massive, and they might be, or they might not be. So I'd suggest we just hold this, so we can keep talking about it, because I don't think we're going to have a result right now.
I agree.
So if there's no objection, we'll hold this item.
Okay.
Okay?